...tenth meeting of the Kingston Select Board. Please rise and join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'll introduce the board to you. To my left is Laurie Schwett, a board member. Glenn unfortunately is very ill. He's not here with us. I'm Elia Alessio, your chair. Chuck Hart, a board member. Peter Bakie, board member. And Susan Eer, our administrative assistant. We have had a non-public session to discuss a legal matter. And now we're open for the first appointment of the evening. Mr. Peter Yanikareus, is he here tonight? Regarding 25 Newton Junction Road? No. Well, I guess we'll move on to the next person. Mrs. Tammy Bakie, had a right to know request. Mrs. Bakie, come on forward.
I'll reuse myself again.
Okay. Grab one of the microphones. Oh, yeah.
Side table.
Sit on the side, Tammy. The acoustics will be better. Good evening.
On February 19th during the candidate's night, disparaging accusations were made towards the former director of the DPW, the former planning board administrator and candidate Ellen Faulkner, the current vice chair of Mr. Koppelman, the current chair, Ms. Alessio, board member and candidate Peter Bakie, and me. Given the source of these deceptive remarks, my husband Peter and I decided not to give them any credence by responding. All but Mr. Coons attended following select board meeting on Tuesday, February 25th, and none of the accusations were mentioned. On February 28th, board member Schwett corresponded via Facebook Messenger with an unnamed resident regarding only the remarks made against Peter and I, questioning my integrity and whether the board had discussed the serious allegations of tax fraud relating to our property at 26 North Road. Ms. Schwett agreed in this text to happily raise the issue in a non-public meeting. Mr. Koppelman learned of Schwett's conversation before the board meeting on Monday, March 3rd, and addressed the accusations against him during the public session. Peter and I learned about the concerns regarding my integrity after the board meeting. Could the board please clarify why Peter and I were not provided with the same information that Mr. Koppelman received prior to the meeting? Okay. Per New Hampshire RSA 75:1, the selectmen are the assessors. In Kingston, the select board hires a consulting or assessing company to do the field work and assessing, and assessing clerks to maintain selectment records. I would like to ask the board some questions regarding the tax collector, the assessors, and the assessing department's procedure and how they relate to the accusations made against me. How long has our property at 26 North Road been in current use? Since at least 1979. Who can remove property from current use?
The landowner can.
The landowner, but the assessor.
And the assessors, correct.
Who calculates land use tax?
The assessors.
Who signs the documents to remove the property from current use and the amount due from the land use change tax?
Assessors again.
Who signs the documents?
I would assume the assessor.
The select board signs the documents. In what year were Peter and I notified by then-assessor Fred Smith of KTR Associates that because he felt we were using part of the land for more than passive recreation, five acres were being removed from current use and we would be assessed a land use change tax? 2015. Who was the tax collector in 2015?
That was Melissa Fowler.
Melissa Fowler. When was I appointed town clerk tax collector? 2017. Does our property at 26 North Road a butt greenwood pond? No, it does not. Who assesses property or structures in Kingston? The assessing company or the assessor. Who calculates property taxes due? The assessor again. Can the tax collector make changes to property cards or what some refer to as tax cards, including names, addresses, and numbers, assessments, acreage, property classifications, values, or dimensions?
Not at all.
No. No, they can't. The tax collector has the same access that everyone in this room does. The only three people who can make changes are the assessor, and with the assessor's approval, the board's administrative assistant, and the assessing clerk. When did we apply for a building permit to build a 40-by-60 barn? June of 2017. What is the procedure when a building permit for a new structure is issued? The assessing company evaluates the structure and determines a value based on their assessment. At the candidate's night, several inquiries were made regarding the refusal of family members from participation. At the January 8th budget committee meeting, Peter reclused himself of staying from voting and did not participate in the discussion on the town clerk tax collector's budget. There were three select board members, the chair, vice chair, and eight members of the budget committee, two former select board members, and a former moderator in attendance. Why didn't any of you speak up and ask Peter to sit in the audience? I have documentation for all of these facts presented tonight, including written confirmation from the assessor Katie Walker, given today, that our property is assessed correctly. These accusations and the lack of support from the board are deeply offensive to me. There is an appearance of dirty political maneuvering at hand. Ridiculous, baseless allegations were made against multiple members of the board and others, but the only allegations being brought forward and entertained happen to be against someone who is currently on the ballot tomorrow, and she has my last name. I feel that if my husband was not running in a contested race where members of this board are publicly endorsing other candidates, I would not be sitting here defending my integrity, but instead preparing for the election. For the record, there is no RSA that states the town clerk or the town clerk staff must attend the election. Also, I am unable to modify the fees for vehicle registrations, fishing license, OHRV registrations, vital record, or my dog's license. There are multiple checks and balances, separation of duties, and specific RSAs regarding the incompatibility of offices in place. If board members are not aware of these procedures, it is essential that they familiarize themselves with the operations they oversee. I would ask for the board's public acknowledgement today, now, that the accusations made against me are baseless.
I will categorically state that all those allegations are baseless. No question about it. You had nothing to do with any of the things that you were accused of doing by Mr. Pellegrino. Absolutely not.
I would second that fact.
I don't question your integrity, Tammy.
Well, that's a hard act to follow. We have an opportunity for public comment at this time, and anyone that would like to speak as well to come up. Mrs. Faulkner. On the side, any side, either's fine.
Inside was part of the discussion.
State your name and address, please.
Ellen Faulkner. Part of the discussion of Tammy's discussion.
Hello.
Okay, and just put the green light and...
A lot of noise. I just wanted to state that the accusation against me was that I had destroyed certain tapes for a specific meeting, and I just wanted on the record that knowing what the discussion had been about those tapes, those tapes had been listened to by the person who said they were destroyed, and they're currently in the safe of the town clerk's office because they were never destroyed, and they were kept just for this particular reason. So if I was accused of destroying them, they are downstairs in the safe. So I just wanted to put that out there, that that too was an incorrect statement. Thank you.
Well, I'll personally add on to that because I sold land to Southeast Land Trust and signed an agreement in December of 2019, long before I even filed to run for the seat. So I don't usually respond to those types of accusations because there's no truth to it. And I used to say on the schoolboy, "You can't win a watering contest with a skunk." And so I usually don't respond. Next public comment. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Come on down to the side over here. State your name and address, please. Just lay it. Yeah, and lay it on this other table.
Lorraine Masioli, 15 North Road. I would just like to say that I am a schoolteacher, and public service is a calling. All of you that have become elected officials, you're still public servants. So to know that our public servants are chastising each other, putting each other down, and are quite cruel, and really defaming other people is ridiculous. That Tammy Bakie would have to actually sit here and defend herself is appalling. And so I hope all of the people that are listening to this and are hearing her, and all of the townspeople that were here tonight in support of her, I would personally hope that they would find the integrity in themselves to offer an apology when apology is due, that they don't do their own fact-finding before they do the accusing. And to think that they would be welcomed elected officials in the future, I think will be quite telling from the townspeople. So I just wanted to make that comment, that she shouldn't have had to do that is disgusting. And I hope the board will fully support her and all of our elected officials in their capacity to do their job rather than be distracted by all this bullshit.
Thanks. Thank you, Mrs. Masioli. Other public comment? Mr. Goddard. State your name and address, please.
Mark Goddard, Ball Road.
Lay your diaper on the table. Put the microphone on the table, Mark. Just like that. Yeah, there you go.
Okay. When I first came to Kingston, I decided that I wanted to get involved in government to make it better. First person I met was Tammy. And I said, "What positions are there available?" She said, "Voting." So I said, "Fine, voting it is. What are the rules?" She didn't even hesitate. She turned around, reached over to her bookcase, grabbed me the book of rules, the laws that existed at the time. They've since changed three times. And by the way, each time it changed, I got another book without asking for it. Previously, I was in an extremely regulated industry, and public servants, we all were. And behaviors were very important because if you screwed up, you'd be in jail. Ms. Bakie's behavior, her methods of training, her absolute adherence to the rules is exemplary. Never seen anything like it in government of this size. Anytime any voting takes place, and I've been through three elections so far on her team, the rules are the rules, and there is no deviation. The behaviors are all professional, and she is always there to answer questions. Everything goes smoothly. She really does understand what it means to be a public servant. And the behavior that I witnessed, we all witnessed, is abhorrent. Anybody that wants to play like that does not deserve to be a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goddard. Any other public comments at this time? We'll move on to committee liaison reports. Peter, I'll start with you.
Just that one thing earlier that we talked about with Pedro. We've been working on that diligently. There's a lot of steps to that. I'm going to be talking to him again about that. The person didn't show up tonight for their appointment, so we will be talking about that. And I believe the police department's going to be talking to a full-time officer in the very near future to try to get him on board to help with his manpower issue.
I do not have anything.
Well, this is officially your last night on the board. I'd like to thank you publicly for your service to the town of Kingston, both in the last few years and the prior years when you served as a selectman, even back in the early 2000s. Never mind your work on the budget committee and a few others in the budget committee in particular, you've worked very diligently. So for that, we thank you very much for all you've done for our community.
Can I add one thing?
Absolutely.
Now we're on TV. When everybody goes to the... Rashored members for the budget committee, please, please, please write in Chuck Hart. Because he has interest in doing that. He's been a liaison from the select board to the budget committee. He's very familiar with it. He's great at it. He does a good job, and I don't think the hours will be as demanding on him as this being a select person. So if you can remember Chuck Hart, please write in. I believe it only takes 10 votes. So if you could please write his name in for budget committee tomorrow at the election. For the two-year, I'm sorry.
Chuck just whispered. I hope my wife's not watching.
Chuck Hart, Budget Committee.
Thank you much, very much, Chuck. I don't really have any updates. I attended the planning board meeting last week. The Sandpoint 70 project is moving along. They're getting close. They'll be back to the planning board first meeting in April to probably finalize the plans and move forward and start work on the project. Mrs. Schwett.
Museum last week, nothing to pass on. Tomorrow's HDC meeting, Wednesday is the Rec Commission, and Thursday is a solid waste in recycling. It's a busy week.
Yes, it is. No other committee liaison reports? We don't have any unfinished business, I don't believe.
The only one thing I have, I don't know if Tom wants to address this. He here, or does he already leave? Up there is. Did you want to address anything about the library, just to give people a heads-up on the microphone, Tom, of the issue we had down here, just to kind of give them what's happening with the library? Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, what was that, Friday night? Had a car ran into the building and did some damage. It's fairly significant. We're having to adjust it tomorrow. Structural engineer, Pedro recommended because of the damage. And we're going to see what the structural engineer has to say, and then go from there. I think we... The building itself is still open, that part of the building. This section of the room is shut off, so hopefully it's... We're going to make it happen fairly quickly, so we'll have to get our ducks in a row. And the trustees of the trust fund... Trustees of the trust fund. The trustees of the library are the actual people that will end up deciding with... I'm going to sit in with contractors and moving forward.
So you'll work with them to make sure it gets done?
Yeah, make sure we pick a viable contract that can get it done to nuts.
Did somebody hit the gas instead of the brake?
Yeah, unfortunately, pulling in and, you know, hit the brake, hit the accelerator, panicked, and went right over the curb and into the building. So... Oh, nice. There you go.
Good afternoon, members of the board.
So yes, I went this morning. I saw it first by the outside, and then I went and did a detailed, small review of the structure. I noticed that there is a double stud that seems to serve as a gable, as a ridge support for that ridge beam up there that is severely damaged. And that's why, because it's a gable end, I don't think it poses a threat to the whole area, so we just sectioned the library into two parts. I was told that that area of the library gets used a lot, so I wanted to just keep the service going for the residents. But we restricted that portion that is in imminent danger. And I spoke with the library director, Melissa, and I explained that only authorized personnel can go past beyond the door where the damage is because...
It's sectioned off.
Yeah, it's very well sectioned off. And like I said, that double studs and about four more studs to each side because it's the center stud that has been severely damaged. So that's the reason why I suggested and advised for a structural engineer to check on that condition, because if that condition has to be replaced, I don't have the qualifications to determine that. I wanted to make sure that it was done properly.
One thing that we should make clear is there was a comment made, and I don't know the whole detail of the comment that was made, but the comment was made that the town of Kingston doesn't own that building, right? However, however, it is in the town of Kingston, and the building's structural and safeness is a responsibility of the town of Kingston.
That is correct.
So we will ensure that building will be safe for the public.
The state statutes give the trustees of the library more oversight, if you will.
Correct.
But we have a very good relationship with the trustees and with the director, and we'll be working together to...
Great.
...ensure that the building is fixed correctly and...
And safe.
And is safe for our patrons to use, so no question about that.
Director's on board with that, too.
Yep, very good. Any other comments or questions about the library? Thank you, gentlemen. New business would be the fire department ALS advanced life support contract for approval and signature by the board. Chief Pellerin.
Good evening. So everybody has a copy and has seen, I'm assuming, the ALS contract. So I've been here a few times discussing it with the board. Basically, it's the same money that we're paying currently for extra ALS, just their services will be terminated on the 21st of March, and Plastow ALS will take over on the 21st of March. There will be no lapse in service, and the contract period will go till next April, so...
Okay, well, this is a good chance to figure out how it's going to work, right?
Yep, and the first year, so we're still going to have at least monthly meetings with the group that was responsible for finding the solution. So yes, we are buying basically into a privatized business. It's a municipal business for the town of Plastow, but we are just customers of theirs. But the chief is very receptive to our needs and wants, so we will have monthly meetings with him to go over how it's working, any changes that need to be made. So there will be one unit in Plastow and one unit in Brentwood. So we're kind of double-covered at the time, so that's a good thing. So I believe that I'm the one that signs it. If one of you want to sign it, that's fine. But I'm pretty sure the signature sheet on the back is the town and the fire chief, but...
Then we're going to let you sign it.
Sure.
How's that sound?
I was reading the contract, and part of the... It was section B1 when it talked about the locations, and it said Brentwood would be staffed if they have staffing permitted, which didn't sound like it was 100% guaranteed. Which is just a little bit different than what we've been hearing the whole time.
Sure.
They would have two locations.
Yep, the way we've been insured by the Plastow Fire Chief is that there will be two medics in Brentwood, full-time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and one supervisor car in Plastow.
Yeah, just in the contract, it doesn't... It just says staffing permitted, which looks like it could be an out.
So it may, and I can discuss that with the Plastow chief. It may say that because the first year, just like any new entity, is going to be a lot of information gathering. That vehicle may not stay in Brentwood. If it's utilized more to the west, like Raymond Deerfield, you know, it may move to another town. So I think that's part of it, but I can definitely get clarification for that.
Thanks.
The other thing, Susan, actually, the legal had reached out to her about another contract with P's Air Force Base. So the reasoning that this had come up is because six or five or six years ago, Epping had a tanker rollover on 101, and they had to call P's Air Force Base to use their foam truck because gasoline was spewing over on the side of the highway and what have you. So there's two different contracts. One is for no foam use, so that if we ever call P's Air Force for mutual aid, which we'd have to be at like a 13th alarm fire for that to happen, they would respond. There's either a foam or no foam agreement, because what Epping is running into is the people on the side of the highway that the foam allegedly had spilled into their wells, now have contaminated wells, and they're suing the town of Epping because they called for mutual aid from P's. I guess knowing the potential hazards, because the foam used at an Air Force Base and with airplanes is different than like the foam we use, and it potentially has PFAS in it. I would hate to tie my hands if the risk over reward of using that foam was for life safety and P's fire said, "No, you signed a contract that said we couldn't use it." Knowing that, obviously, again, stuff would really need to be hitting the fan for me to call P's. But I guess I would prefer to sign it that we could use it if necessary, but just knowing that, obviously, I take the responsibility through the town, and that wouldn't look good if I caused the town a lawsuit. But I guess that's up to you. So I can give you those contracts, carry on, and already reviewed them for another town. So that's, I guess that's up to the board to discuss. But again, my recommendation would be to allow me to use that foam if absolutely necessary, but only on a, you know, last-case scenario. So if you're okay with that, then I'd like to be able to sign that contract as well.
Were appropriate, needed with a P's contract. If he feels the appropriate situation of foam is needed, that is what we entrust him with, that decision.
Second, sorry. For the discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
If it's any more, it's a slight increase. I didn't look at the old one. Honestly, I was expecting Glenn to be here to speak to it, so...
Oh.
But it didn't go up much, if any.
Do you want to put it off till Glenn comes back? Or you want to make a motion right now?
I say go for it, because we're going to use them anyways.
The money's in the budget.
It is budget, right. Pro forma.
Yep.
Give a motion to approve?
I did.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before you go into public comment, too, did we skip over? I'm just kind of curious. We went from committee liaison to new business. Was there any old business?
I didn't have any old business.
That's what I was curious, right. Not to ask you, right. Okay, thank you.
I didn't have any old business. We might, we have a couple of things that he had to go over before, at the, after public comment number two. That's the only thing. Oh, besides the water. So do we take, yeah, we took the vote on that, right? Okay. The other thing is an update from the water. We have the Poet Systems, we've got the last two contracts, right? We're all set with that?
Yes.
And the contract, there's also a contract in here from the Fire, Police Department. You had asked about having a list of the fees for any towing, and that's included? No, so that's all set for us?
Is it attached there? I think that's a separate sheet to be at the end. I didn't have it when I put it back in the folder there.
I thought it was, so let's take a look.
I was just fees and then I, a backup towing company.
Is it attached there? I didn't see it.
No, it's not attached. It's just the insurance that...
I don't, I had mentioned today, I don't think Roger got it through yet. He was doing it, threw up the fees. So probably with the contract meaning, the contract means the time pending, the fees coming, yes. The other, the other control not here, but the other issue.
Paul, I have something.
General gave this to me probably an hour before the meeting. I had asked for it last week. The tow charge is $200 for local, and the storage is 40 per day. That's the towing fee.
Okay. So any, any other anomaly depends on the circumstances directly with the owner of the vehicle?
Yes. And there was the other one, the substitute, there's no substitute, because there's no one else in town.
Okay.
So that those fees are in the new contract?
They were the same contract, the same contract.
No fees in the contract, because that's just a contract that, that is who we use. So the fees are not, it's not a monetary contract. It's just a contract that that's who we're using.
I think you may be referring to the individual that had sent in a letter complaining that he had to pay...
No, I know, but we talked, Chuck, we talked about this last time, and Chuck has also recommended that the fees that they're going to charge are written into the contract to negate somebody saying per price gouging.
So we basically need to put those fees in that contract?
We need an addendum to the contract, yeah, that's fine.
At the end, if somebody questions it again, we know at least what the basics is, but we didn't even know what the basics were at that time.
But there is a separate contract on the fees with the police department. Now it's all, should be now all inclusive in this document here.
With that.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Okay, the only other item was approval for automobile recycling yard. It's, that needs just your signature. That's for Whitney's Garage. It's all set. Okay. All right. Any, public comment number two. Anyone would like to speak to the board at this time? Yes, come on down, stand right over here, please. State your name and address.
You got to put a mic on, just click the mic there, it turns green.
Representing Georgia. Oh, okay. Over 160 Main Street. So I recently got a letter stating that we had contaminated water, and that we might have to have water pooled in in order for us to operate. I don't know what I'm supposed to do at this point. So I don't know if you guys have a protocol for it, but for me to go out and buy water, I was told that the, the water filtration system would have to be replaced once it gets in, and it has to do with whatever the Fire Department did when, again...
Well, we don't know what the source is for your building.
Okay.
Most of the contaminated, there were some, because of foams used years ago.
Yes.
Some of the homes and wells around the Fire Department
Correct, yep.
had PFAS, and we have installed a water treatment system to address that, to clear up the water so it's usable.
Okay, yep.
With regards to the plaza, we don't know the source. It's not, it may not be the same. We have no idea what the source is.
Correct. So they're coming out and doing a retest on Thursday?
That's correct, right. Because you had tested before, it was okay, now it's not so okay. It seems that the level...
Right. They said it was, it was higher than normal, but they're not sure if that was...
Correct. So we're going to work with you, in or Georgia, as the case may be, to help you bridge this gap.
Okay.
We don't know whether the town is responsible or not, but in the meantime, we're going to help you get water so that you can operate. Over Benning's, for example.
Okay, perfect.
Okay? That's, that's our intent.
So my, my question is, my question, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interject. My question is, when do I know when I should or should not be serving people? Because I care about everybody, and that's my biggest concern.
And we care about going over there.
And I love you guys, too. But that's my biggest concern, is like, I want to make sure that everything's safe.
I would suggest you meet with, with Susan Ayer, our mayor of state assistance. She will help you figure out what we're going to do, and she will advise us accordingly, whether it's temporary water in the meantime to get you going, whether, when, how fast can we get a system in there. We have to have some legal documentation, because if it's not responsible to town, we're going to work with Georgia to, to work out
Okay.
the cost of the system installing.
Perfect.
But we recognize the need to help you in the meantime get moving. And so we can work out the details on the side.
Okay, so my other question, my other question is the allotment of the contaminants. So I did some research on the specific contaminant that seems to be the problem that they're talking about. And when I did some research on it, it said you can shower with it, and you can, you know, you can bathe with it, but am I allowed to wash dishes with it? Because if it's not killed with cooking, and you wash dishes, and I put food on a plate that still has the residue of that bacteria on the plate, and they're still ingesting it, am I able to use my dishwasher? Can I use my coffee machine that now has all that residue inside of it? Can I now use my, my Coca-Cola machine? Can I use my juice machine? So I have a lot of questions, you know, because I don't want to make anybody sick.
I was asking those questions today, and what I was told is you can wash dishes with it, but you can't use it, you can't drink it, you can't cook with it. So I'm still, I've got a lot of conversations going with our advisors and with DES, that I don't have all the answers back.
Okay.
So their protocol, DES, as soon as there's an exceedance, is to tell you to use bottled water. And I know that's not going to be easy for you. So we're still working to find the right solutions, and as you know, they're going to come out and test you again on Thursday.
Okay.
I would recommend if you come into the office to speak with her tomorrow during the day, as soon as you're earliest convenience, I would direct some attention to Pedro and the health officer.
Okay.
They might have some more information for you, especially with the health officer.
Yep.
Because if it's hard enough to kill in the dishwasher, I would think it's hard enough to kill in boiling water.
One would think.
One would think. But I think they would give you some direction on where you can call and ask those questions.
Okay, like sanitization and all that stuff.
Correct.
Because chemicals, but again, I'm just, I'm concerned. I don't want to, I don't want to make anybody sick, and I don't want to be the cause of the problem.
No, 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 no.
Well be it, well be it.
And we all, all want to come back. No question about it.
Yes, yeah. I want you guys all to come back, too.
You know, we may have to work at the Fire Department to store some water for you temporarily, if you don't have the room to do it in the back of the plaza there. So we're well aware of some of your constraints, if you will. But definitely meet with Susan, make a list of what we need to do, and she'll know who we have to call. Sanborn Headache Bill is the group that we work with to mitigate the process.
Yep.
So we'll work with you, not to worry. We're here to help you.
Awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you. What time would you like to meet tomorrow?
Tomorrow, tomorrow the office is closed.
Okay.
Election.
Can I get your phone number or email, and I can work with you remotely?
Yep.
Would that work?
Yep, we can do that.
I'll just, do you have something to write down?
Yeah, I can, I can verbalize it.
She actually can write it right now.
Great, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, come on in, come on in. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I'll be in touch.
Anything, any other public comment this evening? Okay. Approval of the minutes at the last meeting, March 3, public and non-public?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Just any corrections, amendments, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting's approved. We have another non-public to review our staff evaluations, our department head evaluations. That's next. That's going to be a non-public with the board only. I'd like to thank you all for coming. Hope to see you again. We love having visitors. We'll see you at the polls tomorrow.
Thank you.
Good night.